been very generous to his employees about paid overtime. Time and half overtime causes a great number of employees to reach that $100,000 mark and above. And so it's something in which I think what we have to be aware of, yes, there's employees that make $100,000 or more. The key for us, are they actually giving the service that's required? And if they're being, if they're earning that $100,000, what we often find paying overtime is less expensive than hiring additional personnel. Because with the overtime, you do not have to pay the additional overhead costs, pension, medical plan, and things of that nature.
Well, and training in the expenses of hiring.
So you have someone that is already trained. So the overtime, particularly over a short period of time, is a major benefit over hiring more people. And so if they're earning it, and they're working those hours, and they're giving the city that their best effort during that work period, then I think they come as a bargain. If they are not performing, and we're not using our money wisely, then the community is not getting the benefit of it.
On another topic, something that you and all of your colleagues absolutely agree on is the Martin Luther King Junior Medical Center, currently incarnated as the King Harbor Medical Center, has to come back as a full-service medical center, including a trauma unit. If everybody agrees, what's the impediment? What has to be done?
The impediment are several things. One, the issue that the losing accreditation was a loss of several million dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars in federal funds. To bring that accreditation back, I believe we have to, as I wrote a letter to the governor asking would he exert himself and bring together the UC system and the board of supervisors to look at a way in which we could get, as we did at Harbor General, bring in the UC system to become the operator of the hospital. They are in negotiations, and what I understand about the negotiation is that the UC system is willing to be the, basically, the clinical and the education component of the hospital. They're not, at this time, willing to be the administrative hub of running the hospital day-to-day. So it would appear, if they keep working together, there's going to have to be some third party. So while they're negotiating this, it's a great benefit, because this is the first movement we've seen on this issue. Right now, and although there's some misnomers about the hospital, people will say it's closed. The hospital is still open, but it's called urgent care. And urgent care is like going to the doctor without an appointment. So 200,000 people are still going to Martin Luther King Hospital to get urgent care. Now, what is harmful is that 50,000 patients who would be hospitalized due to the emergency room are now being spread amongst other county hospitals. And so that delay for service is significant. The fire chief tells us that his paramedics now are, basically, it takes double the amount of time for his personnel to pick up a patient, take them to, find a facility that's open, take them there, and then release them because of the overflow. So even though people often will believe that MLK closure doesn't affect them, it affects every hospital in the county. Because if you go to Cedars, you wonder why the waiting room is filled, it's because they're dispersing these patients that can no longer go to MLK. The other issue is, is paramedics. If you call for a paramedic, they will get there almost immediately. The problem is, they then have to find what hospitals are not on embargo, which ones are open, and at their times, in which they have to drive past a hospital to get to another hospital. Once they get there, they often have to wait until the patients accept it in order for them to then be relieved. So all of these kinds of issues have been caused by the result of MLK closure. And I think what the goal is, is to get that hospital open. It will not open, in my judgment, as a 500-bed hospital immediately, but incrementally open it. Once it's open, and it's basically certified again, and you start getting the residency positions and such, to have the emergency room open would be a major plus for the community and the whole county. At a certain point in the future, the goal would be to have a trauma center, but that may be farther down the road. The emergency room and the inpatient care is the primary goal at this time.
Speaking of health, and the district, you, your district and your neighbor, Chan Perry's district, you now have in place a fast-food moratorium for at least a year. Some people have criticized this, saying, "Wait a minute, you shouldn't be telling us what to eat, where to eat."
That's true. Well, you know, the thing is, is that what we've tried to explain, and we've had some good success explaining it, again, the media likes the term ban. They said you put a ban on a certain kind of business and people, because we've used the correlation of what the health issues are in the community, there are those who took the attack that this was directing people what to eat. What this really is, is a land use issue. We have a situation that in a 35-mile, square-mile area of the 8th and 9th District, we have 900 restaurants. Of that number, almost 50% are standalone fast-food restaurants. Now, the definition of fast food has been with us for 20 years. It basically says, when you go in a restaurant, and the food is pre-prepared, preheated, you have no discretion on the menu, you, there's no seating, there is no, it's a drive-through, you get disposable packaging, those are the criteria for what fast food. So if you're able to go in a restaurant and order and get them to tailor-make your order, it's generally not perceived to be fast food. But with over 400 of these types of standalone restaurants, the community has said, "That's enough." What we want on our commercial corridors are their alternatives. They could be grocery stores, they could be other types of sit-down restaurants, they could be other businesses, but we are giving up too much of our corridors for the same type of business. Then when we overlay in this community that 50% of people have no health care, that we have the largest amount of cases dealing with diabetes, childhood obesity, heart problems, and then we look at the issue of the lack of grocery stores and access to fresh food, you begin to see that this is one element of what we believe is a crisis on health in the community. But it's a land use issue that when a person wants to put a fast-food restaurant in today, they could just merely get a building permit. What we now require is when they want to put one in, they go through a community process that we now have to look at and say, "Well, where are the closest fast-food restaurants that are similar to yours?" If you're in an overly concentrated area, then our suggestion would be that we put another type of business there, that we not keep building the same thing over and over. And what was misunderstood is that the current 450 restaurants that are there that are fast food, they're going to be there, and if people want to eat fast food, they have every right to do that. What we're concentrated on is restaurant number 901, 902, and above. And we've also put together a packet of incentives that would hopefully draw retailers into the community, particularly sit-down restaurants and grocery stores, so that they will come and bring a variety to the community.
So the moratorium is really the easy part, the hard part comes now.
Well, that's true. And the thing is, the moratorium is one year to see how this process works before it becomes a permanent ordinance. But we also have to realize, again, it's not a new concept. For at least 30 years, we've been managing liquor stores this way in the community. If someone wants a liquor license, we send them through a conditional use permit. You can't get a liquor license by right. Recently, the entire city basically approved an ordinance on auto-related businesses. If you want to put a service station, a car repair, a car lot, or whatever you want to do dealing with auto-related businesses, you must go through a conditional use permit. So it's not a new concept, it's just another way of land use to make sure you're not building the same thing over and over and over again. And then when you overlay the health concerns, we're looking to provide people with an alternative to fast food, which might be sit-down restaurant, more healthy diet, but also we're saying that you may not have a restaurant willing to come in, but you could have other alternatives for businesses that would provide a resource to the community.
If you open a good full-service supermarket, for example, people line up around the block.
Well, what we know in 8th and 9th District, that well over $400 million a year leak out of our communities by people who are going buying what they need in other communities. So this age-old premise that poor people do not have the money to support these other restaurants is not true, because they're going to those restaurants in other communities. They're going and spending their money at Trader Joe's, they just happen to be going to Culver City or another part of the community. The issue is, is that the discretionary money in the 8th and 9th District by our residents is significant. And what we find is that these retailers often, grocery stores, restaurants, and many other retailers, will often build on the borders of the city of LA, and they know our residents will drive to those locations to buy their computers, buy their software, to buy their household goods, buy their groceries. And we believe that's just an unfair approach by retailers who will not build where the customers are coming from. In fact, we had one retail grocery store that actually refused to look at a spot in Limerick Park, which we advised them of that community and how well populated, the density, and they said that we'd never build there because our Culver City store was benefiting from all those ZIP codes in that area. And they prefer that that Culver City store become, remain as one of their top stores, as opposed to building a similar store in the heart of the city.
I've never heard that excuse before.
No, but that-
Before we run out of time, I want to get to some other topics. There's been a lot of discussion in this country about oil drilling, offshore oil drilling.
That's right.
You're concerned with onshore oil drilling, in fact, in Baldwin Hills where you grew up.
That's right. Baldwin Hills has a little-known, an oil field that pumps about 10,000 barrels of oil a day. It's been there since the 20s. It's been unrestricted, but communities have grown up around it. And that first indication there is, we need to be more cognizant of these types of situations when we build communities. But now that these communities have been there since the 40s and 50s, people are more cognizant of the smell, the vibration, the health issues as relates to drilling oil. And we have to be very appreciative of Yvonne Burcom, what she did. She pulled all of these issues together to where a community design process is going forward with an environmental impact, to place some zoning restrictions for the first time since the 20s on a business that is more than willing to cooperate with us. And, but, one of the things we're trying to offer to the community, I don't believe legally you can just stop them from drilling oil, they've been doing it since the 20s, but I do think you can put some zoning issues in place that protects the interests of the community, the health of the community, to have some type of monitoring to make sure that groundwater, make sure the soil, the air are all protected, so people that are living in and around that area or driving through it are protected. That's the direction we're going in. The city of LA will pass, has passed a couple of motions to ensure our environmental affairs department takes an active role in responding to the EIR. What's unfortunate is, many people don't realize-
EIR, of course, is the environmental impact report.
And what people don't realize, although that oil field is actually in the county, it impacts the city because with slant drilling and other techniques, and also the fact that there's a concern about the oil field being on a fault, all of those things would impact the city of LA, because it's right at our boundary line. So the reason the city has taken that active role is because of the proximity and the potential harm to our residents and our property.
Another topic that maybe hasn't hit the headlines, but is certainly of great concern to you, has to do with these guaranteed investment contracts and the bonds that you think we and other municipalities and governments around the country have been vastly overcharged various fees.
Is very true. What happened is, it came to light when we had major financial companies basically bankrupt. What we found is that over time, that these companies who rate our bonds, and the better rating you get, the more people will buy them, the better return on the investment, plus the less money it costs the city, they would artificially lower our bond rating so that then we would have to go to get insurance to increase the bond rating to where it should have been at any given time. And by us paying that insurance, it's an unnecessary charge. And then with that, they put our bonds on the market and sell them. Well, we believe that there was collusion, there was price fixing, and there was major corruption. And so recently, I was very pleased to go with the city attorney to jointly move forward on a motion to get an outside group of attorneys to come in and to start exploring that. And what we found is that other cities are now suing the bond and securities industry because they're finding it was across the nation this has been going on. And there's estimates, just in the state of California, our Mr. Locklear basically kind of looks at it and says it could be worth several hundred billion dollars cost to the state, and for the city, we know it would be several hundred million.
Which is pretty much what the deficit, you were looking at.
Pretty much what the deficit is, and again, it's a theft, in my judgment, of public funds that we could have used for public safety, for quality of life, and a variety of things, but to artificially fluctuate our ratings for their benefit can't be called anything but a fraud.
What's the latest on the Metro Expo line, which we've been finding Shepherd for a long time?
Yeah, Expo line is an interesting project. They're doing construction. The 2010 opening date to Culver City appears to be secure. It's going to be close to, between 800 to a billion-dollar project for the first half, and there's already an environmental impact study going for Phase 2, which will take us to Santa Monica. It will be the first rail system south of the Santa Monica Freeway that will give that community an alternative to the Santa Monica Freeway. Eventually, the tie-in to the Green Line, eventually, the Green Line going into the airport, eventually-
Oh, please, please.
Eventually, the subway to the sea, all of those connected lines, and then the connector downtown, will bring about a coherent transportation plan. But again, that issue, these issues will not come about, all of them will not come about without that having sales tax.
It will come as a surprise to approximately nobody, that you spent nearly four decades with the LAPD, rising from segregated patrol cars clear up to the chief of police, and you watched the rise of the gang problem in Los Angeles. And you've, in fact, you've raised a family in the middle of the gangs, at-risk kids. I don't know your daughters, but I do know Bernard Jr., and you and Bobby have been fabulous parents. The question, I guess, is, what do we do about the gang problem, and how did you, as parents, become so successful to take care of your own family?
Well, you know, the thing is, let me say this success, sometime we wonder about the success, because I have four kids, and they're so individual, you wonder if they grew up in the same house. But they've had their successes, they've fallen at times, but the issue is being there for them when they fall, because everybody can be there when they're successful. We're experiencing something right now, our kids are spread throughout the nation. We have one in Houston, one in Florida, one in Las Vegas, and this is the first time they've been separated in that fashion, so somebody is staying in touch with them. But the issue, I believe, the foremost issue for this city dealing with youth is youth development. We have to invest in them, and what, we have to get people to understand, safety in this city is just not about police officers. Safety is just as much about putting a million dollars in books in the library, it's about having after-school programs at Wren Park, it's about making sure those pools are open during the summer, it's about giving 10,000 or 12,000 kids a job during the summer. Youth development is our only salvation for the future, because it impacts education, it impacts literacy, and it impacts gangs. But I don't believe it's in our interest to focus only on gangs, is that that's the only negative in our community. Illiteracy, obesity, and a variety of other things are just as bad to our young people. So youth development is the number-one investment we should have.
On any given day, there might be as many as 120,000 people looking for day labor work, and there may be 30,000 congregated around such places as, well, home improvement stores and things like that. Do you have a thought of how to regulate that?
Well, you know, one thing is that I think we have to be very, very pleased that the number of home improvement stores that have come and brought revenue that's significant, and particularly the ones they've built in poor communities, and we see people renovating their homes. The one thing I disagree with the home improvement industry is that they have created a day labor problem in and around their stores, and they take no responsibility for it. I don't believe the city of LA should continue to spend between 1.2 million and $2 million regulating the day laborer problem around 11 or 12 stores. I believe that the store who creates the problem, just as we would expect a liquor store that created a problem around in the community, or any other store, are responsible for day labors. And so we have, hopefully, a ordinance that's taken us three and a half to four years, because there's been all the stumbling blocks, to come forward and say, "In any future home improvement store of over 100,000 square feet, that you must have a mitigation plan for day labors." And we're not telling them what the plan is. They have to be successful, because my belief, if you tell them, "Do A, B, and C," they'll do it, and you'll still have a day labor issue.
Believe it or not, we have run out of time already, Councilman.
Well, I expect to have to come back then.
Would love it. By the way, if you have questions or concerns about city issues, here's how you can reach the councilman or his staff. You can write to him at City Hall, Room 460, 200 North Spring Street, LA 90012. Phone number is 213-473-7008. Or you can email to councilmember.parks@lacity.org. Details on every council office, as well as the field offices and all city departments, on the city's website at lacity.org. And something else worth knowing, 311 is your one call to City Hall for any department in Los Angeles government, and by the way, that's for any non-emergency business item that you may have. Your council district close-up returns with a different member of the city council every weekday at 8:30 a.m., and then again at 7 p.m., only here on LA City View, Channel 35. For everyone here at LA City View, I'm Jack Poch, joy, and thanks very much for watching.
Water, first aid kit, and this neat emergency tool for shutting off utilities. Honey, we are going to be prepared for any emergency. Honey? Sweetie? I have one more surprise. This really cool cranking flashlight.
Get the message? Be prepared.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning. Today is Friday, January 9th, 2009. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The first Friday is normally in the San Fernando Valley. And we meet at 10 o'clock. If you're unable to be here, you can go to the San Fernando Valley and not be able to speak from that podium as well. Fridays are our normal days for presentation. We are still waiting for a quorum. Thank you to councilmembers Parks, Smith, Wesson, and Zine. We would ask that councilmembers Alockon, Han, Weesaar, Labange, Rosendahl, please make their way to the council chambers. So we will have a quorum. We do have a little bit of a lighting issue. So if you see a little more dark in the council chambers, we're trying to fix that as well. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge our chair of our Budget Committee, Mr. Bernard Parks, Councilmember Bernard Parks, for our first presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to ask Stacy Bolden and Ayesha Martin-Walton to come up. And this is a presentation on behalf of the 9th District. Ms. Perry is at her AQMD meeting. But we wanted to recognize them because they are involved in a very critical program in the 9th District and also in the 8th District. They are part of the California Community Relations Service, which makes up the Safe Passages Program. The California Community Relations Service is a conflict resolution and mediation program located within the State Attorney General's Crime and Violence Prevention Center and operates the Safe Passage Partnership. It's a multi-agency effort aimed at protecting students from violence as they travel to and from school. The Safe Passage Partnership operates via the Safe Passage Subcommittee at participating schools, which meet monthly to exchange information and discuss ways to effectively implement change in our community. The program has helped over 30,000 students in the city of L.A. at 11 high schools in the L.A. area, including four in the 9th District and two in the 8th District. We've had a very difficult time in many of our students getting to and from schools as they navigate through territory housed by 60 violent gangs. The program has proven to be successful and that it's been adopted as a major component in several school safety initiatives launched in the city and the county of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, in June 2008, the state legislature eliminated the funding for this program. Here today, we have two individuals that have worked together in this program with councilperson Perry's 9th District. Their hard-working dedication has made this program a reality. And so we wanted to honor them for their wonderful work and contribution and the great value to the community that's helped all of us work to a common goal in making the city a better place and a safer place for our youth. It's been through a truly thorough effort to where people in Los Angeles benefited from this program. I'd like to have us all welcome to the podium our director of the program, Ayesha Martin-Walton, and her first lieutenant, Stacy Bolden. On behalf of the 9th District and the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to just honor you for your work that you've been doing. And Jan Perry would love to have been here, but she's at one of her outside meetings. And so on behalf of the city, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so very much. On behalf of Attorney General Jerry Brown and the immediate past director of the Crime and Violence Prevention Center, Nancy Matson, it's very humbling to be here today and accept this award. Because the work that we did on the behalf of the families of Los Angeles was really, it was truly a collaboration of so many agencies and so many people who worked tirelessly. And even though our program has lost the funding, we know that the great people of the city of Los Angeles will continue to work. Agencies such as law enforcement, schools, transportation, the city attorney's office, gang intervention specialists, probation, and of course, as Councilwoman Parks said, the council districts 8 and 9, Jan Perry's office and his council district, Councilwoman Parks, were very instrumental in helping us to, at least one hour before school and one hour after school, send a message to gangs around these schools that is no longer business as usual. So if we were able to save one student from getting jumped, getting shot, just getting accosted, and feeling more empowered to report crimes, then we made a difference. And I'd like to just give a special acknowledgement to some of the staff in Councilwoman Perry's district. Brandy Chappelle, who's here in the audience. Hugo Ortiz and Pamela Huntun. They were with us from the very beginning. And also, the last thing I'd like to do is just present this to you, Councilwoman Parks. This is a copy of a report of some of the work and the accomplishments at the 11 high schools in Los Angeles. And we've included a template on the program so that any school who would like to start a Safe Passage program can do so. So again, thank you so much. We are honored and thank you for the award.
Thank you. Stacy, would you like to say something?
No, I think Ayesha said it all. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go in the back and take some photos.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Our next presentation is by Councilmember Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, viewers out there on Channel 35 as well. This is in support of, to celebrate in Biona, the Biona Institute. Just want to let you all know about this. We had an amazing event a couple of weeks ago. We had hundreds of people. And we had a huge collection of journalists and activists who have made a huge difference in Biona. To get journalists and politicians together is like a first. We had a lot of elected officials and we had a lot of people who are active in environmental movements and the media. To get the combination of the media and politicians on the same wavelength ain't that easy all the time, but it was quite an event. And today, I just want to highlight the folks of the Biona Institute located in Playa del Rey. The Biona Institute serves as an educational center for research, advocacy, and exploration of the Biona Wetlands ecosystem. Due to 20 years of courageous efforts by the citizens here today, the public acquisition of over 600 acres of land at the Biona Wetlands on the Los Angeles coast in 2003 was able to become one of the most remarkable initiatives to preserve open space and biodiversity in our city's history. In fact, if you go down Lincoln Boulevard, folks, and look to the right as you're going toward LAX, you'll see the preserved land. We can thank a lot of folks who made that happen. The Biona Wetlands are the largest coastal wetlands in Los Angeles County and home of several rare and endangered species and is considered to be part of the internationally recognized Coastal Wetlands Complex. The people here today who represent the Biona Institute deserve to be commended for their courageous perseverance through the many obstacles faced in order to help us preserve this natural jewel in our midst. The Biona Institute has made many exciting and fun events. In fact, I went with them four years ago and walked through the wetlands and looked at the birds and looked at the flowers and really found myself connected to Mother Nature. And Roy Vanderhoek, who you'll see standing right here in the video, this gentleman here took me through. And there was one bird that had me going like this. I mean, it's a real, it's a what?
Whitetail kite.
Whitetail kite. And so, you know, our commitment to nature is part of who we are as human beings. And the Biona Institute, with their exciting and fun events, have planned for the year ahead so you can fully experience all of the Biona Wetlands has to offer. Please visit their website, www.celebratebiona.com for more information. Thank you for all you have done to preserve and advocate for our fragile coastal ecosystem and enhance the beauty of our wonderful city. I'd like to introduce Marsha Hanscom, Roy Vanderhoek, and Lola Terrell, who are three of the leaders of the group. And I'd like to present to them, Madam President, this certificate of appreciation from our great city for what they've done. Marsha, come on up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill. And a great round of applause for our guest today and honored.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosendahl. And we have something for our councilman, who has become a great champion of the Biona Wetlands since he's been our councilman and gotten connected. One thing he did yesterday was put a resolution forward for transferring some city surplus land into a park along Grand Canal Lagoon, which is part of the historical Biona Wetlands. So we have a presentation for him. This beautiful, great egret that is taking off from the Biona Wetlands. And so thank you for being our champion.
Thank you very much. It's lovely. It'll go on my wall in my office.
And we also want to thank those of you on the council. A number of you signed on to be members of our honorary host committee for this year-long celebration. And I want to recognize you. The president, Eric Garcetti, who's not here with us today, Wendy Grul, Janice Han, Bernard Parks, Greg Smith, and Dennis Zine. We thank you for your support on the host committee. And we are going to be having a huge community picnic. We hope you'll all be able to join us for, and also an arts event this year. And it's all to just help people realize that we do have nature here in the city. We have endangered species right here in Los Angeles. And a lot of people don't know that. And it's really an important thing for us all to embrace and help educate people so that we continue to preserve this special place. And Roy Vanderhoek, our biologist, I think wants to show you a little bit of the taste of what we have here.
Hi, I'm Roy Vanderhoek, a biologist. And one of the projects we're doing in conjunction with the Sierra Club is bringing back bluebirds in blue nest boxes that open up like this. And then you have real birds inside. But this gives you a little sample of what a bluebird nest might look like with baby bluebirds. And you hang them up in trees very nicely with a basket box that holds them up. And we've got several hundred in different city parks around Los Angeles and throughout Los Angeles County as well. So we're doing this in conjunction with the Sierra Club. And I know that Bill would be enjoying this too.
Okay, well, thank you. One quick moment, yeah?
We have a, I'm Lola Terrell, outreach coordinator for Biona Institute. And we have a dinner catalog from our Celebrate Biona Dinner in December. And we invite you all to come down and please come on a tour with Roy. You'll be amazed. Thank you.
Great. And thank you very much, Bill. And thank you to all of you and Marsha, who I've known for many years, and your for many years, and your real passion for this effort and to preserve Biona Wetlands really is incredible. And sorry, I couldn't be at the dinner, but I was there in spirit. It is a celebration and for all of us to enjoy, and Bill, for your leadership on this issue. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Wesson for our next presentation.
Today is one of my favorite days of the month. It's Pet Adoption Friday. And I've been involved in this program since I was first elected, and I'm really proud to say that we at the City of Los Angeles have a 100% adoption rate. If you want a companion animal, someone that will give you unconditional love, I highly recommend that you go to one of the shelters. We have six in the City of Los Angeles. We have hundreds of pets that are looking for a home, looking for a mom and a dad. Generally, at this point in time, I give the phone number where you could call. And if you like this beautiful doggy who's a poodle, he just has, as you told me, a funky haircut, but he is a poodle. He's ten months old. This is as big as Marco is gonna get. But when I first met Marco, he licked me like he just did. So I think Daddy is going to take Marco home with him. So the City of Los Angeles still has a 100% adoption policy because Marco, you're going home with me. But if anybody out there, don't get upset. If anybody out there is interested in a dog or a cat, we even have rabbits, please call 888-452-7381 and make arrangements to visit one of our six shelters in the City of L.A. Come on, let's go get acquainted.
I would say, did you tell your wife yet, Mr. Wesson? Or she's learning of it by TV today?
What I told my wife, and I'll say this, we have DirecTV, so we don't get this on.
Okay.
I told her he's just coming home for a sleepover.
A visit? Sleepover, okay.
To see if he gets along with my other dogs.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Wesson. Colleagues, we are still waiting for Councilmembers Hahn, Labange, and Mr. Garcetti. The other members are excused today. We will wait a few more minutes, and then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are still waiting for a quorum. If we could ask Councilmember Hahn's office. They're here almost? Okay.
There was a wall made of stones.
It is 10:40. I know they said they were close by, but we are waiting for Councilmembers Hahn. Mr. Garcetti was excused, so we are waiting. I know Mr. Labange you mentioned, but we are at 10:40. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Vice Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Smith moves, Ms. Hahn second.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
On the regular agenda, Madam President, items noticed for public hearings, items one through six are street lighting district items, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to January 30th.
That will be the order.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items seven through 11, ten votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone wish to call those items special? Anyone wish to call those special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Madam President, that would take you to public comment.
Thank you. If I'd like to call the following individuals for public comment, Richard Kearns, Diane Tuchmeyer, Nicholas Gutierrez, followed by Michael Hubman, I believe. Please. And if we could have quiet in the chambers, if you do have conversations, to please take them outside. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a medical cannabis patient and advocate and a fifty-seven-year-old gay AIDS activist and long-term survivor, a PWA, a Person with AIDS. I've submitted copies of my remarks to the Clerk this morning. I want to give you a heads-up this morning about a surprise issue coming to bear on the L.A. AIDS community, AIDS and aging and the assisted healthcare system. Three and a half years ago, when I moved into the assisted care facility where I live today, as a person with AIDS over fifty, I represented 10% of the national HIV-er population. Today, I represent a quarter to a third of that national figure. In five years, I will represent 60% of that national population. AIDS is a chronic disease. The older we get, the harder it is to survive. An estimated 70% of gay PWAs in the United States live alone, a characteristic not shared by the majority of straight elderly persons with chronic conditions. And so, in the years ahead, our community will depend increasingly upon the assisted care system, which offers nursing home light, a place to live, meals, laundry and room cleaning, and access to infrastructure such as transportation and pharmacy services. The assisted care system in Los Angeles is a system of abuse in a culture of abuse. Residents are more like sides of beef shuttled back and forth to different meat lockers than residents or patients, and homophobia is a significant unaddressed hardship. The two main inappropriate and non-medical rules of care: increase your billings by packing in as many patients as possible, and cut back on expenses, which means cutting back on services. Profit rules, not medicine. I look forward to sharing three and a half years of stories and observations with you on this topic in the coming months and suggesting actions we can take to reform the assisted care system in preparation for its core role in AIDS survival. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Diane, followed by Nicholas Gutierrez.
I volunteer with the L.A. Zoo's Research Department and have done weekly behavioral observations of Billy for five years. I've spent hundreds of hours formally observing him. I encourage the City Council to keep, okay, I encourage the City Council to keep Billy in the zoo and complete his new home for the following reasons. Billy's habitat will meet his physical, intellectual, and emotional needs. The hills, pools, and wallows will provide enjoyable activities to occupy Billy and additional elephants. The zoo is fortunate to have a creative enrichment staff and dedicated keepers who have additional ideas to engage the elephants. It is argued that elephants need to walk extensively to maintain their physical and mental health. Inside the four acres, the elephants can wander while remaining interested in their surroundings and exercising freely. Opponents have made several factual errors. They believe that Billy's head bobbing will stop if he is moved to a sanctuary. The recorded observations of myself and other observers have been analyzed by Dr. Kathleen Cox, head of the Zoo Research Department, and she has determined that Billy primarily head bobs when he is anticipating his keeper's arrival. I have seen Billy engage in many other activities such as swimming in his pool, playing with twigs, rolling a ball and tire, and tossing mud that he has mixed. Opponents have stated that if the zoo acquires eight elephants, each will have only one-half acre to roam. The logic is absurd. Each elephant will have the entire four acres. Billy is able to walk freely 24/7 and will be able to do so in the new exhibit. I called the Paws Sanctuary and asked whether their elephants could do the same. I did not get an answer then and did not receive the promised return phone call. I can only assume that the elephants are frequently confined to their barn. The Asian elephant population is declining. If allowed to stay at the zoo, Billy will have the opportunity to mate and add to the population. Sanctuaries do not allow breeding, and Billy would probably be casted and certainly kept separate from the females. Please allow Billy to stay at the zoo.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gutierrez, followed by Michael Hubman, then it'll be followed by Clyde Williams.
All right. Good morning, members of the Los Angeles City Council. I'm here to speak also, as my colleague has. I'm a research volunteer at the Los Angeles Zoo, and I'm also a volunteer docent there on the weekends. And I would just like to kind of paint a global picture for what elephants in the wild are facing today. In October of 2008, the IUCN, the International Union for the Conservation of Nature, listed or stated that one in four mammals is in danger of going extinct within our lifetimes. Elephants, especially Asian elephants, are part of that one in four. If you want to think about numbers, how many Asian elephants are left in the global population? It's approximately about thirty thousand with their numbers going down. To give you a visual, that's less than the number of students at the University of California, Los Angeles. That's how many elephants are in the world, less than our own university here in the City of L.A. And those numbers are going down every single year. So what can we do? Why is there such a problem? Why are all of these elephants dealing with this? They deal with a lot of human-elephant conflict where local peoples go into conflicts with these animals. Their habitats are being fragmented, they're being lost due to deforestation and farming, they're being illegally captured for the logging industry, they're being legally sold to other countries, and also, they're being poached. An interesting thing about Asian elephants, when Asian elephants are killed for ivory, it's only the males. So they're seeing the sex ratios in their native populations are skewing towards more females and less males. Why is it important that the zoo participate in the captive breeding of Asian elephants? International organizations like the IUCN, WACA, the World Wildlife Fund, the International Elephant Foundation, national organizations like the AZA, zoos across the country, more than twenty zoos have shown their support for this particular project. Even four zoos that no longer have elephants support this project. So show your support for the Los Angeles Zoo, show your support for Billy, and come to the zoo when you have the time. Thank you all.
Thank you very much for being here. Michael Hubman?
Good morning. On November 18th, the Police Commission held a hearing on Safer Cities Initiative. There were presentations from civil rights lawyers, the ACLU, and various community groups who took issue with what they see as oppressive policing. Then there were the major missions, who were for safer cities or against it or somewhere in between. The one thing they had in common is they droned on through their fifteen minutes of allotted time talking up their programs. The county talked up their programs. The mayor's office did the same. Councilmember Perry talked a lot about programs. She mentioned the Friday Children's Program at Gladys Park, which we should thank Councilman Weezer and his staff for. But that's all fine, but what about, the reason that the civil rights community had been agitating for this meeting was not to talk up programs. The Bureau of Street Lighting talked up their tree trimming and using brighter bulbs to deter crime. What Skid Row needs is more trees. There were about thirty people from the community who actually sat through all this program hyping and were given just one minute each. I fell into that category. So here is the presentation I did not get to deliver at the Police Commission, delivered in increments. Safer Cities Initiative, naming the problem. My name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. My opinions are remote, but however, today, I'm speaking to you as a member of the Coalition for the Abolition of Safer Cities Initiative. The goal of our coalition is to end oppressive policing and selective enforcement that is being visited on the poor and homeless people of Skid Row in Los Angeles. The city government and the police call this activity Safer Cities Initiative. I call it socio-economic cleansing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Good morning. My name is Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road in El Cerrano, speaking for the Friends of Southwest Museum Coalition. We are continuing our efforts as far as the lease agreement for the Autry National Center. The Autry National Center has not complied with any of the terms and conditions of the present lease for over twenty years. The attorney, the city attorney, has apparently decided that that's not worth worrying about. It's only eleven acres, fifty thousand square feet. The Wrexham Park has recently been reviewed as to their monitoring and placement of Quimby funds. Recreation in Parks has never issued any default statement, any query, any approval for any of the actions taken by the ANC in the Southwest, sorry, in the Autry National Center and Griffith Park. We are continuing our search for documents, and I would like to remind the Council and the Attorney that this month, supposedly Autry- the attorney that this month, supposedly Autry National Center is to submit their tax returns for the 2008, and also their annual report. I doubt if they will, because they never have before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clyde. Phil Jennerjohn? Phil Jennerjohn? Okay. Followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Michael Carrion as well.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm here today with some pointed criticisms of our current mayor, Antonio Villarosa. These statements are all matters of record. In the 1970s, while a student at UCLA, Antonio Villar, as he was known then, was the leader of a racist and separatist group called Metcha, Movimiento Estudantil Chicano de Atlanta, a group whose motto is "Por la raza todo, fuera la raza nada." For those of the race, everything; for those outside the race, nothing. For an elected official, this is the moral equivalent of being a member of the Ku Klux Klan of the Nazi Party. Unfortunately for the voters of Los Angeles, a leopard does not change its spots. Antonio Villarosa is still Antonio Villar, the UCLA Metcha leader. He is a dangerous man with dangerous political beliefs. In 1994, Antonio Villarosa celebrated his election to the State Assembly by running off and having an affair with the wife of a friend of his. He managed to betray two people at the same time, which is not easy to do. In 2005, Antonio Villarosa had an affair with television reporter Myrtle Salinas. He continued to allow her to report news on him, even though it put other reporters at a professional disadvantage. In his personal life, Antonio Villarosa has shown a tendency to betray those who are very close to him.
Actually, Madam President, his personal life of the city officials is not within the jurisdiction of this council meeting.
All right. I'll skip the professional. Antonio Villarosa, just this week, gave a nice city job on a taxicab commission to a young lady who admitted that she's still a law student over in Washington, D.C. Well, that didn't matter to Antonio. What mattered was that she's a blood relative of someone here on the city council. These choices show poor judgment and poor leadership. They also show very obvious signs of corruption. It is beyond my comprehension why anyone would elect or reelect this man as mayor. Luckily for the voters of this city, nine men have had the courage to challenge him in his upcoming election. I am one of them. Thank you for your time. My name is Phil Jennerjohn. I'm currently running for mayor. Please visit my website, www.philjenerjohn.com. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes, good morning, councilmember. Donald Sacks. When I was here on Wednesday, I expressed an opinion that it was a black day for the city of L.A. because of the cable and the public access fiasco. And I was corrected by Councilman Smith, who stated that the city fought the law. But there's fights, and there's fights, because the law had two parts to it. There was the franchise fee part, that who would control that? I cannot, in all the time that I've been here, remember that somebody from city council, except for the last couple of months before this law was passed, ever stepped up and said, "If this law goes through, then the city of L.A. will lose its public access TV stations." Because—then the question remains is, why all these public TV advocates, all these leaders coming down here at the end of the—just before the law, saying, "We need your help"? Why not before the law was passed? Why not when—the speaker, Fabian Nunez, who authorized the law, who pushed the law, where was he from? From L.A. It just does not make sense. I've heard the city council argue about the billboards. I've heard the city council argue about the police salaries, that we needed for more police, but it turns out it wasn't for more police, it was to pay salaries of the police that are already on the payroll. I've heard lots of different arguments from the city council regarding lots of different issues, but only half truths and half lies. It just does not make sense that the city council did not take any action to enact laws providing Verizon have the capabilities for public accessing also.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. I think, as indicated by Mr. Smith the other day, we adamantly oppose that legislation, took a position, and had our lobbyists up there trying to defeat that at the time. So—Mr. Sacks, thank—you. Mr. Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. I'm glad you all can join us. Just because the public does not have a watch out there or clock—we started off at 10:03 with one person here. In order to have a form, it was 10:40 before the last person showed up. Don't you people start your time, your days on time? I don't understand this. Most people are docked if they don't show up on time. If they don't show up on time consistently, they're fired, they're reprimanded, they're disciplined. Instead, you guys come here and have breakfast. You have conversation. Yes, you start eating. You sit here. You show up late. You drink your coffee. You don't deal with the issues. The city attorney seems to be involved with everybody's business except his own. He was here eight minutes late. So I'm back on my parking issue. I'd like for somebody to get on his parking issue. First of all, it's against the law for anybody to park in the red. It does not have any exemptions. The law is black and white. And I would hope that Ms. Grohl's office would contact me. I talked to her office, they don't even know who works in the Transportation Department. So, Mr. Labange is so passionate about the parking enforcement and the NOHO, and I applaud you for that. But I also would like you to be just as passionate about the illegal parking that the city employees are doing. Ms. Han—or, excuse me, Ms. Han, Ms. Grohl, is talks about revenue, revenue, revenue. Well, the city employees that are parking there should be paying their fair revenue if they're parked illegally. Sign them and collect that money. I guarantee you, you will be a lot closer to balancing the budget if you enforce that equally. My question is, is it against the law? If you all are aware of it, is it a conspiracy? Where does it go? You allow it to happen. Please do not play ignorant to this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. I have some folks from the San Fernando Valley, two in my district that are here visiting city council. If they can please stand up. Ellen and Joe Solomon, thank you for visiting us this morning. Marilyn and Dick Moran, thank you for coming down and visiting us in city council, residents of the San Fernando Valley, and thank you for your tax-paying dollars to keep the city running. Thanks for being here.
Welcome. And if someone hasn't suggested to you to go up to the tower—it's probably a beautiful day, you can probably see miles away—to go up to the tower of here at City Hall. So, welcome downtown. Thank you. Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, any other items before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused March 10th and 11th for city business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused March 10th and 11th for city business. That also meets council policy.
Who'll be excused?
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, June 26th for city business. That meets council policy.
Who'll be excused?
Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused Friday, March 6th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Be excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused to leave at noon on various Fridays starting in January and going through the end of July, and those all meet council policy.
Thank you. He'll be excused.
And Councilmember Smith requests to be excused August 5th, 7th, 11th, 12th, and 14th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Thank you. He'll be excused as well.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Yes. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to advise the council and the community that as we get forward—going forward on the budget process, that we schedule the four community meetings for the budget in the valley. The first one in the community will be January the 26th at the CBS Studios, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Council District 2. February 9th is in CD 11, 6:00 to 8:00 at Westchester Community Room. Also, on February 23rd, 6:00 to 8:00 at El Serrano Constituent Center, hosted by CD 14. And then on March 23rd, 6:00 to 8:00 at Expo Center, hosted by CD 8.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Labange.
Just to follow it up with Mr. Parks and the suggestion we had, my committee did have a hearing where various departments under jurisdiction of Zards Parks Health and Agey did report, and I suggest to other members to do that. It helped—we came up with an idea where Ms. Han is introducing a motion today along with myself to help raise money for the zoo. So it was a very fruitful experience. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Alacon.
Members, the northeast San Fernando Valley has produced quite a number of professional athletes, so I'm very pleased to announce that tomorrow, January 10th, at 11:30, in Silmar, there is going to be a grand opening of the Ballers Indoor Batting Cages. The ribbon-cutting will happen at that time. This is the newest business in Silmar community, and Radio Hot 92.3 will be there from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. There'll be free food, free batting cages for the public, starting at noon. I might even hit a ball or two next door, if I can still hit. But next door to the beautiful Nethercut Automotive Museum, which is across the street from the Merle Norman factory, and I recommend that people do both, actually. Go to the auto museum and the event. And so, I want to encourage folks to join with the North Valley Youth Baseball and the Silmar Independent League, folks who will take advantage of this, to hone their skills in hitting baseballs. I believe our kids can learn so much through sports activities. In fact, I can tell you that if it weren't for Little League Baseball, I probably would not be here today. It just kept me on the right track. My parents always threatened to pull that benefit from me if I did not at least perform in an adequate way in school. I don't want to say I excelled, but I at least performed in an adequate way. And so I encourage people to support our kids in supervised sports activity. That is, I think, one of the ways to reduce some of the problems we see later on.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Any other announcements? Colleagues, do we have adjourning motions? We do have adjourning motions. As everyone could please rise.
Colleagues, ask that we adjourn in the memory of Patsy Cabesess, who recently passed away at the age of 59 on December 29th from long-term health complications. Patsy was born and raised in Los Angeles, where she raised her three beloved children by herself. Patsy's favorite holiday was Halloween. She and her family were known for their annual haunted house they would have every October 31st. Her children and neighbors would look forward for the next Halloween and how they were going to scare the neighborhood kids even more than the previous year. She was also quite the cook and enjoyed trying new recipes from the Cookie Channel. In her healthier years, she used to own and run two catering trips, which were quite successful. She is survived by her mother, Anita, sister Rosie, brother Hector, her children Henry, Linda, and Jennifer, two granddaughters, Elizabeth and Cynthia, her niece Jasmine, and nephew Renee, and great-nephew Josiah. She will be greatly missed by all who know and love her.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon.
Members, a woman who has been involved in civil rights actions for 85 years and has been a longstanding resident of Pacoima has passed. A very good friend to many elected officials, Ida Kinney, passed away at the age of 104. Ida—I met Ida and knew her as Packing House Ida, and I never knew the specific story about why they used to call her Packing House Ida, but I knew that it had to do with the union struggles in the packing houses way back before I was born. And she developed a reputation as a tremendous civil rights activist. But to speak of her life, she was born May 25th, 1904, in Lewisville, Arkansas. She was the only child to Henry and Bessie Ford. From the age of three, she lived with her grandparents, who were former slaves, who taught her valuable lessons about the ethics of life and putting God first. In 1920, Mother Kinney moved to California. She and her mother lived in Santa Monica until she graduated from Santa Monica High School. She then attended Philander Smith College in Arkansas for one year, and returned to California for her second year and attended UCLA. While at UCLA, she met her first husband, Carl Binion. Ten years later, he passed away from a war injury from World War I. In 1940, Mother Kinney moved to the valley, where she returned to school to continue her education and graduated with a bachelor's degree from the San Fernando Valley State College, my alma mater, also known as Cal State Northridge now. She was refused her teacher's license, but protested and petitioned Governor Pat Brown for help, and within 10 days, she received her credentials. She was quite a fighter. She—as I said, fought for 84 years on a multitude of civil rights issues, anything that had to do with civil rights in the northeast San Fernando Valley in the last 50 years, she was involved with. She knew personally folks like Rosa Parks, Dr. Martin Luther King, and Medgar Evers, and attended just about all the significant marches from the '60s to the '90s. In December of 1942, Mother Kinney became a pioneer member of the Greater Community Missionary Baptist Church. She was appointed to the Mothers Board by Pastor Reverend Dr. D.D. Chapman. In 1952, she met and married Perry Kinney. They had one son. They shared over 50 years of love and life together until he passed away at the age of 104 in 2004. Mother Kinney was one of the first blacks to work for Lockheed Aerospace and campaigned and was successful in opening doors which allowed black workers to join the union. She was appointed to the Commission on Aging for the County of Los Angeles, where she served actively for 12 years. She—former councilmember Howard Finn credited Mother Kinney with the building of the multipurpose senior center, which opened in Pacoima in 1971. She continued her involvement and support of the center throughout the rest of her life. And on her 100th birthday in 2004, Dennis McCarthy of the Daily News wrote an article on Mother Kinney, calling her "Our very own Rosa Parks, Miss Jane Pittman, and Eleanor Roosevelt, all rolled up into one." Mother Kinney led a long and spiritual life, and she will be missed by all whose lives she touched. I have to tell you that we don't have the time to talk about all the things that she was involved with. And I can tell you, as a city council member, and even representing Mayor Bradley since 1989 as his San Fernando Valley coordinator, I can tell you that she was involved in every significant action that brought resources and equity to the northeast San Fernando Valley. And she will be sorely missed. She was a conscience. For those of us who served in leadership positions, if—I probably saw her about a year ago, she was still telling me, "Be true to what you said you were going to do," holding me accountable, and I will miss her. She was also a personal friend, interestingly, of my sister for many, many years. She is survived by her cousin, Myetta Miller, who is 107 years old. I want to—I want to get ahold of those family recipes. And Evelyn Green of St. Louis, her granddaughter Semidon Ensley, her grandson Darryl Kinney, eight great-grandchildren, 15 great-great-grandchildren. And she was just an amazing, amazing person. As I did a adjourning motion, I think, a week ago or so, she is another one of those people that will not be necessarily noted in history, but is really part of the masses of people who made up the civil rights movement and have really changed the world today. I am very—I am very pleased that Ida Kinney was able to see Barack Obama be elected to president.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Mr. Rosendahl, or do you want to make a comment? Okay. Ms. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President.
I'm sorry. Ms. Rosendahl, did you want to comment on this one, or you?
Richard, what a beautiful obituary for someone in our city. And I just think that's the kind of voice and the person that we should highlight every time. And I just want to interrupt our adjourning motions to say, when we honor people, whether it's with our Channel 35 and going and sending them out to find those people, to tell the story of the people of Los Angeles is truly a beautiful thing. To live to be 104, to have her husband be 104, to have her cousin be 107, what beauty and all the work that they did, as you said, equity and justice and being true. All members.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Rosendahl.
Yes, indeed. And we know we only have the moment. And a dear friend of mine passed away a couple of days ago, the Honorable Herb Katz. In fact, he just became mayor of Santa Monica a year and a half ago, and he's a member of the Santa Monica City Council. Many of you have heard me say that in the 11th district, in the heart of our district, is the city of Santa Monica. And I've known Herb Katz since 1981, when I was the cable— And I've known Herb Katz since 1981, when I was the cable guy down the street there in Santa Monica. Well, he died. And just a side anecdotal story, I took him on on an issue three months ago with Bobby Shriver about Measure T, which was a development issue, and he attacked me, stopped meddling in my city. Then he immediately called me, and he said, "Bill, you're taking it personal." I said, "No, babe, I love you. We're old friends." And we learn in politics that friendships and loyalties and relationships and values can transcend political parties and ideologies. And I said, "Herbie, I love you." And he says, "I love you too, Bill." He said, "But you know, I had to do what I had to do." I said, "I know, and I had to do what I had to do." And that was just most recently, we had that conversation. But Councilmember and former mayor Herb Katz, an accomplished architect who dedicated more than three decades to public service, died on Wednesday after a long battle with cancer. He was 78 years old. The Sunset Park resident, who was recently re-elected to the City Council in November, and I endorsed him, I might say, on Wednesday, January 7th, with family and close friends at his side. During his time in Santa Monica, Katz served on more than a dozen different community organizations and City Hall committees, including the Board of Directors of the Santa Monica YMCA, the Planning Commission, and the Architectural Review Board. His time for the past nine years, and he'd been a councilman before, was spent on the council, where he applied his planning and design background in many development matters that came before the diocese. It was also there that he challenged officials with the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District in 2007, when parents came forward regarding problems in special education programs. Katz has children in special education and was very passionate about protecting the rights of students and their families. Herb began his long career as a public servant in 1974, when he was appointed to the Architectural Review Board, later serving as the chairman in 1979. That was followed by an eight-year stint on the Planning Commission, where he served his head for five years. Herb was first elected to the council in 1984. In fact, I moderated the debate when he did that, serving until 1992, when he took some time off, and then he returned again in 2000. And in late 2007, Herb was selected to serve as mayor, actually for his first time in his 15 career years on the diocese. Herb graduated from UCLA in 1950, and eight years later from USC, began working at a firm where he designed churches and school projects. He's survived by his wife Brenda and his daughter Dana. Memorial services will be held this Monday. I'll be there on January 12th at 10:00 a.m. at St. Monica's Catholic Church, located at 725 California Avenue in Santa Monica. May he rest in peace.
Definitely, all members.
Yeah, I have another adjourning motion, too.
Okay. I think Mr. Garcetti wanted to comment as well.
Maybe Mr. Labange wants to add his good wishes, too. But yeah, he was an extraordinary public servant, and I remember being at National League of Cities conferences, and we would find ourselves on Capitol Hill, and we took some meetings together with Senator Feinstein and others. And he was a good regional voice as well. He didn't just think about Santa Monica, but somebody... You know, when you serve in a city council in a smaller city, it really is a second full-time job on top of everything else you do, because you can't live off of the salaries usually that they pay. But he was somebody who was thinking about Santa Monica, presided over a lot of preservation of rent control and other things that were very impactful, and thank you for doing that, Mr. Rosendahl. I'd like to add my best wishes to his family as well, my condolences.
Thank you. Mr. Labange? Okay, thank you.
Indeed. Thank you, colleagues, for your comments, too. Estella Myra Burnett. Estella Myra Burnett passed away on December 29th, 2008, at Kindred Hospital. Estella was born on February 22nd, 1935, in Hazelhurst, Mississippi, to Ralph Hanley and Alberta Hanley Woodard. She was the fifth born of nine children. Estella Burnett had a full life of commitment to her career as an educator, a community activist, and as a parent and as a wife. Estella graduated from Alexander High School in Brookhaven, Mississippi. She received her AA degree from Santa Monica College, her BA degree and teaching credential from Loyola Marymount College in Westchester, California. Estella continued on to receive her master's degree in 1977 from Mount St. Mary's College. Estella worked for the RCA Corporation for 14 and a half years. She started on the assembly line and later moved up to the lead lady for the group. Her last job before she left the company to return to school was an inspector, where she worked directly with the U.S. government inspectors. Estella worked at Westminster School in Venice as a teacher assistant. While attending college, she worked at Mark Twain Junior High School and as a noon study assistant. She received her credential. She worked for Delta Sigma Theta, head start for one semester. She later was hired by the Los Angeles Unified School District and returned to Westminster, where she worked for one year as a fifth-grade teacher. Estella's life was a busy one, but her motto was, "If I can help someone as I pass through the way, then my living will not have been in vain." She exemplified this in many of her activities. Estella was a member of the Calvary Baptist Church in Santa Monica for over 50 years, and she served in many capacities and attended community Bible study. On December 21st, 1957, Estella married the love of her life, Robert L. Burnett. This union was blessed with two children, Dwight Burnett and Myra Burnett, a loving and devoted wife and mother. The family shared many great times together. She's survived by her beloved husband of 51 years, Robert L. Burnett of Venice, California, daughter Myra Burnett of San Diego, and two sisters Bernice and Bertha, nieces and nephews and other relatives and special friends. The memorial service was just held this last Wednesday. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. In memory of John Huffman Jr. John was the younger brother of a very good friend of mine, activist in the Chatsworth area named Dan Huffman. Dan's younger brother and him and his other brother Dave grew up in Chatsworth and did what little boys in Chatsworth do. They caught snakes and frogs and went fishing in the fishing hole, because that's Chatsworth, a very unique area. He carried out through his entire life that kind of free spirit that you grew up with in Chatsworth, extensively traveling through Central America, the Northwest, Pacific Northwest, and Indian-upping Mexico, and the Gulf of Mexico and Florida. He died at 55, a very young age. He's survived by his brother Dan and his wife Kim, his other brother Dave, and sister-in-law Kim, as I mentioned, and their sons, John III and Kenny Huffman, two wonderful people in the Chatsworth area. And I know he always loved his home in Chatsworth in California and longed to come back to it. And it's unfortunate, at the age of 55, he'll never have that opportunity. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Garcetti?
Madam President, I ask that we adjourn in memory of somebody who passed away on November 16th, 2005. But it's significant because this week, there were medals given to this individual posthumously for an incident that happened in Iraq. Its Second Lieutenant Donald McLaughlin, who at 26 years old, lost his life, but was awarded the Navy Cross this week. Navy Cross is just under the Congressional Medal of Honor for bravery. And there was Navy corpsmen and a group of Marines that went to clear an area near the Syrian border in Iraq, and they were pinned down as they went through house to house to kind of clear people out by insurgents that were in four different positions, who immediately caught them in crossfire and began to shoot at them with AK-47s and hand grenades. The Navy corpsmen, who Navy corpsmen are usually attached as medical personnel to Marine units, for instance, he had a Navy Cross. He survived. There was a grenade that was thrown towards all of them, and he took the grenade to throw it and blew his hand off, and he lost his hand. But the Second Lieutenant, Donald McLaughlin, who was a doctoral student in chemical engineering at Stanford University, I believe, when he first joined the Marines, somebody who had a very bright career ahead of him. When this happened, he went and ran over to all of the Marines that had been pinned down in one area, and using his body as a shield, helped evacuate them out until he was fatally shot and killed. It's one of many stories that sometimes go unreported, and when we have military decorations, they can take two or three years, as we see here, to finally be awarded. But in honor of his bravery and his literally giving his life for his men, I ask that we adjourn in memory today of Second Lieutenant Donald McLaughlin, who lost his life at 26 years old defending his men and his country.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. All members. Mr. Labange?
Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Irving Bush, the wife of Marilyn Bush, as you know, Irving and Marilyn lived in Las Feliz. They had one daughter, Nicole. Irving was a great musician and played within that King Cole. But he was also a great husband, who was so supportive of his wife, Marilyn, who's been down here as an activist for education, for the improvements of the Las Feliz district, and for Griffith Park. Irving Bush is a great man. May he rest in peace. Also, members, I want to reflect that a year ago today, the late, great Johnny Grant ascended into heaven. So, how time passes, we remember Johnny Grant on this day as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Meetings adjourned.